I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the April 4th Harbor Committee meeting. We have this side, Mary Ann Eddy, Lily Fell. I think Vice Chair John Parker is in the Zoom sphere. Okay, and Legal Counsel Elizabeth Nail is here. Brandt Reiner from Nelson Pope, and Sam, excuse me, sorry, sir. You're here, and a producer. Doris. Doris. Alvarez. Welcome. We have minutes. So bear with us while we go through the minutes. We have just been the March 7th, I believe.
Wow, different form. It was just the thing down to the water. This was table, but I don't see it on the agenda now.
None of those guys.
I don't see him here. Fifty-two.
Hi, John, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, yes. And I can hear the members mumbling some things.
No issues.
No issues, you guys?
I just see on new business, Historical Society's got a typo in it, historical. Nothing of substance.
And then we just went right to that. Oh, then, um.
Table.
John, do you have any comments about the minutes?
No, I'm okay.
I like the new format, Doris. What do you think?
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moving forward, the March 7th minutes have been approved. At this point, we have anybody in public that would like to speak about any outstanding issue or interest? I don't know if there's anybody in the no hands? All right, Correspondents' Recurring Action, 11 Bridge Street.
This is a lead agency request from planning board. It's a type one action, and so they're asking to coordinate secret review. And they send out the lead agency request to all involved agencies. And so you would, you would adopt a motion to operez to send back that it's okay for the planning board to lead agency in that side of the field.
Fine with me. There any issues here that we should be aware of?
No, that's typically the board that's the most prepared and used to reviewing secret for larger applications in those municipalities. Since they have a site can review, we have occasion. And special exception permit as well.
Have you looked at this, Brandt?
I have not. The first I saw of it was when you checked anything out.
Okay.
I don't think we want to get into parking situations with mixed-use buildings.
Right.
I would say let them take the lead on that.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I don't know, Lily, you kind of gave me a funny look.
No.
Oh, okay, no funny look, okay. I make a motion that we have the planning, Planning Board take lead agency status with the, on the secret review of 11 Bridge Street.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, so. You need a signature on that?
Liz, do you know what type of septic they're planning for that? Are they going to hook up to our current septic system?
Do I sign my agency?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look at the application to say for sure, but I believe that was the intent, to connect to the sewer street. But I'd have to look at the ex-application. It is available online.
Okay.
Um, if you're, so I'm aligned.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I don't think you want to open the set, you wouldn't want to click on regular.
I assume it would want to go under the sewer system, so.
Thank.
Well, if it's on the sewer line, if it's not on the sewer line, then it has to have like its own onsite septic system. But, I mean, we can take a look.
Okay.
And then offer comments to the planning board.
Uh, second item, 288 Redwood Roads. And the request for a two-year extension to the wetlands permit. Okay. Are you reading?
I'm here, you guys had asked that we show up some last meeting and get some questions.
The first question is your name and your address.
188 Redwood, Josh Schwartz.
Have you run into issues with compliance? Can you tell us about it? Because this is kind of a new situation for us as well.
Well, I would, I'd like to say one thing, one friends, you know, honestly, I wasn't here last time. I, I didn't know I should have been here.
It's okay, you try.
But there was a lot of speculation, you know, publicly, I thought there was, um, you know, I would have preferred it just ask me I would have been here. Because some of the things, you know, that were speculated just are not accurate. And I do appreciate the chance to come and tell you what's going on. But very simply, you know, you guys approved, so I had gotten an approval to extend the bulkhead extension. That took two and a half years, get to here, right?
We didn't approve a bulkhead extension, okay.
Through the state, the army, the town, et cetera. I got here, you know, you guys didn't, didn't want that to go on, so, you know, we worked, um, I think, well, to change it. You approved that on 4/7/22. I have the list there, so we got Army Corps, but I had to go back, you have to go back. But the long and short of it is it, it took until today to put a shovel in the ground.
Okay.
You know, the price of this went from an estimated $16,000 at the time to now to deal with this, this committee was $55,000. And to do this project is, is $47,000. This is for 24 feet of property. That I will just say, you know, part of the speculation that was said on that last call that I watched, I wasn't here. This was entirely caused by some things that went on with the neighboring property. It's, uh, it's gotten dry. I know there was, there was some speculation at the time, that's not the case, but I assure you that is the case. So I have just been, you know, you, you had questioned that maybe I didn't do the work. I had come in here saying it was an emergency when it wasn't. I assure you that if I didn't do something to stop this, including have my neighbor come in here and try to remediate the problem, which was not easy. This thing would have gone straight to my house. It took out 65 feet of property in two winters. Right? And these properties are, what, 100 feet? Okay, so the bottom line is, to answer the question directly about being in a pose, this is the first, so what happened was I got the building permit last, then the last September. So it took a year and a half to get to that place. No, nobody would put me on a, on a schedule without these permits. Right, they'd say, no way, because no one believes that you'll ever get the permit. But at the time, I get the permit, and then I'm asked, can you please wait until we get approvals for the neighboring property? Said, okay, right? I will tell you, I went, you know, before the winter and checked.
Did we ask you to wait?
I think it was insinuated that it would be nice, if you go back and listen to the meetings, that, um.
Insinuated or literally said?
Uh, some people said that. The neighbors should work together, this and that.
Right, but I don't think, because I was surprised when they came in and asked for a permit to do work, because I didn't think they were going to do anything. I was kind of floored when they did.
Yeah, I think, I'll tell you that, that's a lot of discussion went, went on, I think, explanation of what the reality of the situation is. You know, the real risk, what is actually transpiring. And so I think it became clear, which I don't think it was. I think things were done that, you know, that weren't malicious, but they have big ramifications, you know, as, as I've experienced. So the bottom line is that because this is a small property, you know, and it is limited, you'll see, I know that you're going to discuss this thing, but you got to bring equipment in. So, you know, the truth is, I was asked that they're going to come in and tear up my property again to fix the name, right? So I said, okay, I'll wait. What happened was at the end of the summer, but I guess the beginning of the fall, I went down to look, you know, there were these corallabs there, and they're, they were destroyed. And I actually, you know, I got scared, because I felt protected, as long as I make it through the winter, this thing will, you know, it's entirely upland enough. It's exposed up, so the minute that the water hits that, it's gone. And, um.
So, excuse me, you say they were destroyed, were they destroyed by some man-made force or just the wave action?
I've learned, you know, I've put enough of these things in, that they don't last more than 18 months, 18 to 24 months in this saltwater. I mean, at least, and I'm buying them, they're as good as any other corralab I've seen, you know, so. But, so I replaced them all to get through the winter. But, you know, about end of December, I decided that this was not tenable to me anymore. I, you know, every winter, I'm sitting here nervous, the last four winters, this has taken four and a half years. And I called up, you know, the contractor, and I said, I want to move forward. So I was at, you know, I asked when that can happen. They told me a year from now, right, they're booked up. So I said, I can't do that. So then it took me up until, uh, March, I guess the meeting was the 7th of March, that you guys had. I think I contracted two days prior to that, paid, paid the money. You had visited the property, said there was no sign, if you go there today, there are signs of, of work being done, that the, you know, the offer's been set. Chesterfield's going to do the work on their subcontract. It took a while to find somebody who I felt I could trust, that, you know, you're going to put this thing in, and it's actually going to be viable. So I was assured by Costello, since they weren't doing it, and that they've done all the work on the property to start with, that Chesterfield will, if they do it, you can trust it. But the bottom line is that it's taken, I am not trying to push this off to sell the property, that I was speculating, there's no interest in that. You know, I will tell you, it has not been enjoyable to go through this process. And I've thought about not wanting to own it, because this was like a dream, and I've owned this for 14 years now. But I have been in front of this committee, you know, for 12 out of those 14 years with different members. And, uh, you know, only, and that house has not changed, you know? It's not like there's any, it's a cottage that if you walk in feels like you're in a campbunk. But bottom line is, I refuse to even consider such an action until the moment that this thing was, I felt stabilized. So that's why it hasn't been done, the work's being done. And, you know, the issue is, I need more time to get the work done. That's why I'm asking you for.
So I made the comment about property for sale. The one that I knew was for sale is your neighbor.
Yeah.
I never heard that your property was for sale.
Not coming to you, right?
Yeah, so if, if we construed that you were for sale.
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Her view of her word, and it's not something they should be in spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to make it clear, like, you know, I'll, this open, open uh, truth here, I think it wasn't right that I didn't get to put the, you know, the extension of the bulkhead. This was not bulkhead scour, I didn't sit and debate it after it became clear that you didn't want that, right? The bottom line is that, you know, this is, I have been trying since the day that this board, whose committee approved the, the permit to get this work done, and it has literally taken until now. And it's taken four and a half years to go through the 23-foot issue. And in that time, the nest, the neighboring property has just disappeared, you know? And mine would have too if I didn't do something.
I don't think, are there really any issues here?
No.
Of a permit that we approved, he's explained what the delay was, and I think that we should just approve, approve the extension, continue to do the work.
Right. And we didn't know you were on the phone, we could have asked you.
I wasn't, that's why I wouldn't.
Oh, I thought you said you were.
Even know, no, I watched it, you know, two weeks later.
Uh, that tape, yeah.
Got in touch with me.
Right. Okay, so I make a motion that, do you have something to say?
I would like to hear a motion.
I make a motion that we extend this permit for two years.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so noted, so.
Thank you.
Apologies.
I appreciate it.
Move forward and.
Yeah, I, I mean, can I just say one last thing?
Sure.
You know, for what it's worth. You know, I, if, I think you'll recall, I, I had Chuck Hamilton get involved in this thing, you know, and, um, you can tell, I'm sure, I'm not exactly a politician. You know, I've come in here and represented myself three out of the five times I've had to come in front of this committee. And I forget, Bruce Tate the last time, you know, suggested that I need to hire somebody to come in and fight with us. So I said, why do we have to fight? Right, that's not my intention. Bottom line was, for me personally, it's, I just think, I understand this desire to not have a hardened shoreline. But I truly believe that this wasn't the right, the right decision as far as the actual, I don't even, there will be a solution here. But I don't even know that it's going to work, right? I'm doing it, it will certainly slow the erosion down. But, you know, every single person, and these are not, these are not inexperienced people, right? This guy Chuck Hamilton ran the enforcement division at DEC for I don't know how many years. He just, he's, his view was this was the right solution, that, you know, DEC are the trustees, so. I, I understand the issue about, you know, hardened shoreline and all that, not wanting it, but this is a, this is a 100-foot piece of property where, you know, an entire bog and wetlands was wiped out in two years. Right? This was not exposed to water. And I feel like I really have borne the brunt of a lot of stuff that, you know, was, it was not my doing. And environmentally, uh, this is, it's, I'm losing more property. So I just ask you to, I think this stuff should be done much more individually and with less antagonism. I certainly did not come in here to, to be that way. So that's my two cents, but I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you for being here.
62.
62?
Yeah, so 62 Joel's Lane. David Burke and Anita Leahy.
We have a request for the applicant to take the application, so we're ZBI.
Table. All right.
That's the main second.
All right. 174 Main Street, Sag Harbor Historical Society.
Sorry, you know, can you move to the table?
Oh.
I make a motion to table 62 Joel's Lane until May 2nd.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor, aye.
Those in favor? Have you got any close? All right.
Red Roads, here for 174 Main Street Store Museum. And last time we were here, we were asked to delineate 50-foot buffer zone. And we have revised the survey, which has been submitted to you guys, showing that we have been able to provide a 50-foot buffer, and we I think the only thing that we need to do is make a declaration, I think, that we're going to preserve the upper zone perpetually. And we also have gotten some information from the environmental consultant regarding the existing plantings that are behind the behind, or in the buffer. A lot of, of problems there, I guess, with invasive species. And we would offer that we would take care of that, make sure the invasive species are are eliminated, and, and that we would reintroduce any kind of native wetlands vegetation that conforms with what the locality requires.
Do you have a planting plan? Usually there's a planting.
We need advice as to what would be necessary. I mean, we see a list of plants here in the report from NPZ. But up until this moment, we saw this, we didn't have any idea that we would need to do a planting plan for that buffer zone.
Yeah. True. Because it's when, there's a planting plan that's incorporated in the permit. And then that's what's checked off, that it's executed the way the permit has stipulated. So without a planting plan, there's not any grit there to what we're permitting. It's part of the design going forward.
I, when you say permit, you know, we, if we get approval here, I guess we'll, we will go to do zoning, and then after zoning, we will apply for a building permit. Is that part of the building permit? Or do you guys issue a permit, separate from the building permit?
Yeah, it's a wetlands permit. I don't, do you need to go to zoning? Are there zoning issues with setbacks?
Yeah, because of the, of the pyramid law.
Are you asking for pyramid relief?
Permit relief from?
Pyramid relief.
Oh, yes, we'll have to ask for that, that's the next phase we have to go through.
Brandt, is there a generic planting plan that they, that they could download, that would be something that they could attach to this without incurring a lot of cost? Is that something that would be acceptable?
And that would be at the discretion of the board, as to whether or not they would
I mean, if, if.
List of native plantings, that would be acceptable, and we would review it, and make sure that the plantings are acceptable for the habitat and the environment that they'll be changing.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't think that the applicant needs to go through hiring in landscape.
Well, they have people on your board, I think Silas was on.
We have Silas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Silas could get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we really need a, a plan, because otherwise, otherwise just saying that it's a buffer is, well, the buffer has to have the appropriate plants in it.
It could, Silas could do it, it could be this species, this gallon, at this center line to center line.
Quantity.
Quantity, and something like that. That's done on a lot of projects where you don't actually have a GPS location of the plant. You say it's going to be this percentage in this area. So I think Silas is well-versed in this, that could help you without incurring a lot of cost. But we do need that document, so that in the future, we can go back and make sure that it's been applied to to the property.
Do you have any examples, Brandt, of something that could help illuminate the situation of what it is that we're looking for?
Absolutely. As the applicant has probably already experienced, we're willing to have those dialogues with them and their landscaper.
Right.
Whoever will be doing the planning. It could be in a report form, or it could be in plan form, you know, the, the area is described on the survey, it's, you know, it's only 3,700 square feet, which will help keep the cost down. The canopy, all, all but maybe one or two of the trees that are there are actually native and site-appropriate. So that's a good thing, and we're just talking about getting the understory managed, you know, pulling out some of the invasive species and then, and the native species that are, you know, able to out in future, uh, invasions and recreate that, that was supposed to be there. So it's all.
Yeah, well, we're perfectly willing to go through all that. And what I was wanting to ask is, if this means that we have to come back again.
But Liz, can they not be like, irrationally going to the ZBA?
Yeah, they can, they can apply to ZBA.
We can imply simultaneously.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So go to the ZBA, but get us a planting plan.
Yeah, because we do have, uh, there's a possible grant that we might get, but we need to have all our stuff lined up by August, so.
Or you have time for that. Make your appointment with ZBA, talk to Silas, communicate with Nelson Pope, and at some point soon, come back with a planting plan.
And we can submit that between meetings.
That's what our counsel is saying.
Yeah, you have to get, you submit it to us by the Friday before this meeting. So that they have time to review it, we have time to see it, look at it.
Greg, it's a pretty easy, for your project, it's pretty easy, and because you have Silas on board, it's, that's as good as it's going to get. That's going to save you out of the pocketbook too.
Quick question, if I'm doing my math correct, correctly, the size of this building is about 325 square feet, something like that.
Approximately, yes.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're, we started with the premise of making it exactly, pretty much exactly the same size as the building that's already there.
It's a little bit larger, maybe.
It's a little larger, because we added some storage space into it, but it's.
And it's up on stilts, it'll be.
It's up on, yes, it'll be up on piers.
Piers, rather, or whatever.
Yeah, so it's not going to.
What are piers? Pilings of some kind.
No excavation, except for the excavation for the piers, and, and then and as you know, we're on this sewer line, so we're not going to have a septic system. We think would be fairly non-intrusive.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a big point, though, I think we should emphasize that as well, that it is on a sewer line, and that's, that's really important.
Do you use the existing well?
No, that's just an artifact.
Oh.
We were keeping it there because some of the members want to have it as part of a tour of the property.
It was a functioning well at one point?
At one point, it was, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so moving this along. I guess that.
So we just ask them to come back and show us a planning plan and?
But you could, you can.
Or subject to.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, we've agreed.
They have to go to the ZBA.
Get, get, get all your documents ready for ZBA.
Yeah, I'll do that. Um, and I also spoke to somebody named Chip Hamilton at the New York State Department of Environmental. And anyway, we spoke about the long year back, and he says, once we're not removing any trees, we're, there's no problem.
Yeah, they won't have, they won't have an issue with that, their product, their product is not proposing to remove trees as far as we have.
But you said there were a couple of non-natives that?
There are a couple of non-natives, but to take them down, you know, I don't even know that that's necessary.
Okay.
You know, there's enough native canopy there to really be established. That will be at their discretion as to whether they want to propose it or not, and whether the board wants to approve it or not. You know, I. That will be at their discretion as to whether they want to propose it or not, and whether the board wants to approve it or not, you know. If there were a dominance of invasives, then you'd probably want to take action against that.
What species of the non-native do you know?
I think it's Norway maple. And, you know, there's good, you know, silver maple there, I want to say there's black walnut there.
Yeah.
There's some really good stuff there.
Yeah.
Growing appropriately.
Yeah.
So another thing is when you, when you fell trees within other trees, sometimes unnecessarily damages the trees that are there, so to take down whatever, you know, Norway maples are there, I didn't see them specifically, I don't know how big they are. It's not uncommon to still leave them intermixed and with the natives.
So we're not taking any trees down?
Unless the harbor committee wants them to take.
Shut up.
They should leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to.
Sure.
Return.
And there's no problem with us picking up all the, the dead wood that's long in the ground.
Correct.
I mean, because there's rocks, it allows for various species.
You recommend that the historical society consult with either a landscape ecologist or a landscaper who's interested or understanding of native species. Because, you know, you can be disturbing things unnecessarily when you do do that, you know. For now, it probably makes sense for you to, you know, have a walkthrough with somebody. You know, if you did want to meet with our landscape ecologist, you know, I can set that up as well with your landscape, you know, team. So there's a clear understanding as to the path that should be taken, so you guys can develop invasive species restoration properly. Try to do it in one shot. We're happy to do that, too.
Something. So we got that.
Sure.
All right.
We don't need.
See you next month.
Yeah.
Thank you, Craig.
Good luck with your grant.
Thank you.
Right. The next item.
What was the motion?
Oh, I thought we did that.
Make a motion to table this until May seventh.
I said it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed. You have recorded it. In new business, twenty-seven Bay Street, the Sag Harbor Yacht Club. Are you all from the yacht club?
Yes. Yes, we all are.
We love you.
I make a motion to open the public hearing on twenty-seven Bay Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor.
Good evening, everyone. Tiffany Sparlato, forty-five Division Street for the applicant Sag Harbor Yacht Club. As you can see, we have a number of them in the, a number of members of the club and more in the audience, as well as the project architect Rick Stott. I think, as the board is aware at this point, I don't know if you can throw up the initial plan. This is a request to relocate the existing entry gate and covered waiting area from an angle parallel to be parallel with the dock. We create an additional four hundred and ten square feet of repurposed open space with hardscape, which is bluestone pavers. It's now being engineered to angle directly into a planter, where there was no stormwater remediation before. It's now engineered to be able to do that. There are some plantings that are being removed and replaced with Rosa Rubusa. And basically, it's a very minor project, but basically we're just moving the gate, sort of straightening it out so that it's parallel with the street and the bulkhead. And we look at that, we're saying. Different plans. If anyone has any comments or questions, as I said, I do have the project architect here, as well as the members of the board, if they have if they still have any questions for us.
I'm sorry, is there a picture of this?
All right.
There are many.
Doris, do you have it? Can you put it where John is?
Maybe the plan to show the, to show the new drainage. Do you have that?
Right, those are, those are included in the last of the plans.
We don't have.
You have five in your comments.
I'm looking, looking, looking.
I see John.
One seventy-four. Twenty-seven day. No picture.
This is discussed at the last meeting for our discussion items. The last meeting.
From last week? Okay. Just give me a moment. Twenty-seven Harding. You got it?
No. I did not see it in our packet.
No, it's not. It's from last month, which bizarrely I happen to have with me.
I don't have it. I don't have it on. Who's going to have it? It's a standard file? No. And I have the laptop. Does anyone have?
That's what I'm looking.
Do you see him?
There are.
You submit, this is what I wonder what happened to on the paper that I submit.
Wait, 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 this might be a.
Feel the same way.
Twenty-seven?
Definitely. But that looks like the original application. There should be another set of plans.
I don't.
Maybe I can run out of my car and get it sent.
I printed out a small set, just so I have the myself.
Are you guys?
Sorry.
Yeah, you want to just explain it to us here?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right here, here.
It's okay. Just explain it to us here.
Do you want to?
Sure.
Eric, you want, do you want to, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yeah, very well.
So this is the photograph of the existing.
Right.
It's sliding. That's what's existing. This is the existing bluestone patio that's maybe expanded slightly.
Which way? Into the water?
No, actually landward. Landward, see?
I'm sorry. Somehow we didn't get this.
So this is, this is the existing patio right here.
This is the.
Okay.
Looking at right here.
Okay, I've been there.
Right, and then this will be the newly created patio. It should stay straightened out, because right now it's angled like that, so it's straightening it out.
And where is the clubhouse that we all know and love? It's down here, down here?
It's whipping down.
Where? So which way? This way, yeah, it's down here. Okay, so this is this is where the gate is.
This is how the engineering is being done, not the decking. Great, can speak better to the foundation.
Are you the architect?
Yes.
What's your name?
Okay, so here, this is what.
Nice to meet you.
Exists now?
This is what exists now, and this is as proposed.
Oh, this is better.
Yes.
It's much safer, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Because I've seen people with carts go over and it's still running down. I think cars get loose.
And it's all landward of what's there, so.
Yeah, and also by, I think it's not, the law's ever going to mitigate the stormwater, which is great.
It looks like you're losing.
Let's just do it.
Okay, so what do we need to?
Any objection?
No.
We did receive a memorandum.
Go ahead.
Sorry, we did receive a memorandum from Nelson Pope, who said it was substantially, in compliance and substantially applicable. So if the board didn't have any exactics or questions here on the IRP for next week, they're hoping to be able to get this done by the beginning of this season.
Good.
Yeah.
Do our, hear anything from our panel here?
Yes.
Almost.
But that's Brent, Brent, what are, what are your?
We had no objection to any of this. It's all being, taking place within areas of disturbance behind bulkheads within an active marine that's been there for a very long time. You know, it's, in terms of products that you guys review, this is one that really is, I think, appropriate for pushing it through as we had discussed last meeting. To just sort of get this one out of your docket. So again, they are just doing work in areas that's already disturbed.
So you don't need to worry about any of the construction going into the bay?
Yeah.
Because it's all landward.
It's all landward.
And there's no moving of the bulkhead.
Well, that's, there will be a need for isolation fencing along the bulkhead to make sure that the soil, as it's being disturbed, will not go into, but it won't be anything like you saw a few years ago. It's not like that.
No, that was a bulkhead replacement.
Who's doing the work?
I got right now.
Who's doing the work?
We don't get, there's two or three that we're looking at.
Okay.
You're going to try to do it now, this spring?
That's the goal. Like I said, next week will be IRB and then it will be frost.
Make a motion to pass.
Do I hear a motion?
I, I'm so moved.
Yeah, I second. Oh, you have questions?
No, I'm saying it's, it looks good. So all those in favor?
I'm sorry, one second, one second. You just have to open it up to the here from the public.
Yes.
Oh.
Before you close the public hearing.
I'm so quick here. Are there any, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about this project? How about in the Zoom world?
Actually, I have, I have a question, and unfortunately, I couldn't see what was handed out there. But I'm seeing the, the removal of ten or twelve red cedar trees, and those are being replaced with, with what?
Now, just to be clear, there was a misidentification in Mr. Stott's plan. They're actually Hollywood junipers that are being removed, and they're being replaced with Rosa Rubusa.
Okay.
There's only seven.
Right, there's seven, as opposed to, there was a number of.
Good point.
Okay.
Any comment, John?
He's froze out.
No, that's right. That's a correction on that. I appreciate that, understand that.
Right. All right, I make a motion.
I'll second.
Wait, wait, we need to close the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting in the public realm has been closed, and now do I hear a motion to?
Approve. I make a motion to approve this application.
Good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Should be lovely.
Good luck.
And we like what you're doing with that stormwater, putting it into a planter.
The discussion items.
Oh, you know what? I did have it.
You did?
Yeah, it was here. I mean, it was kind of incognito, right? Oh, yeah, they were all like.
This was in the, this was in the package you picked up today?
I'm not sure, because I.
Because I picked up a package on Tuesday, it was just probably anything.
Yeah, and then I picked up this one, which was last month's as well. I don't know why, but I did, and I brought it with me. So either between that one, that's probably where this came from. And we have this one.
Could you sign this?
Yes.
Your sound is off.
Sorry, John.
Okay. Going to discussion items. Local law number two twenty dash one point three, to allow for the extension of the sewer service area to include service areas K and L as outlined in the Sag Harbor Sewer Master Plan. dated March twenty twenty-four.
So this is on before the village board trustees next week, and Nelson Pope and Jorge's prepared that coastal consistency review for you. And it's like the old forms. There's a amendment dated April third, twenty twenty-four, which you should have in your possession. It does say that Nelson Pope and Jorge's reviewed the CO master plan and completely detached coastal assessment form, the water record, how we gave the program post consistency checklist for consideration by the Harvard Committee. Based upon their review, NPV did not identify any significant adverse effects on the use, enjoyment, or protection of the water crown relating to the proposed action, and they believe that the sewer master plan is consistent with the adopted policies of the Village LWRP and chapter two seventy-five of the Village Code. Therefore, it's recommended that you adopt the attached LWRP coastal consistency assessment, which aligns the sewer master plan to be consistent with the applicable policies of the LWRP and therefore consistent with the going of Sag Harbor LWRP. So that is in your possession, and that's for your consideration tonight.
Okay, so do I hear a, a motion to, I get to approve this would, would be?
Right.
I'll make a motion to.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so noted, so we have approved.
And they're asking you to sign it, too.
Yeah. And Doris will pass that one?
Yes.
Okay, item number two. A local law to amend, local law amending Village Code section two sixty-five dash seven use of sidewalks in section two sixty-five dash nine to clarify the code and any conflicting code provision regarding bicycle routes within the village.
Just on for notification to the board, it doesn't require any action by the board. So this is a type-two action number two, so therefore it does not require action or coastal consistency review by the board. But it is important for the board to be aware of what the Village Board Trustees is doing, so that's why it is distributed here. Basically, it's clarifying bike routes in the village. So some of the roads were, to line up the roads with existing bike routes in the village, they had to amend certain sections of the code. And you could read through it for specificity if you want to. I'm not as familiar. It came as a recommendation from the, I believe it's called the.
Open Space Committee, John Shack, and those guys.
Okay.
Yep, and that's.
John Shack.
So we don't need to?
We don't need to do anything.
All right, thank you for that. Item three, local law to authorize property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C.
This as well doesn't require any action, because this is a, the local law required, we're going to pierce the tax cap for the budget, and they did not do so. So this will actually be, just open the public hearing, and then close the public hearing, take it off the agenda. It won't be adopted by the Village Board Trustees. That's my understanding. So it doesn't require any action, this board. I think this would just put on for referrals.
Okay. Item four, sixty-eight West Water. The Sag Harbor Village Homeowners Association to discuss wetlands permit summary report twenty twenty-three, prepared by First Coastal.
That's good.
This keeps, oh, okay, because this keeps coming up, doesn't it?
You got rid of me, didn't you?
Welcome.
Billy Mack, First Coastal, for the applicant. It's really just a summary of the work that we've been doing, which is fragmity remediation at the villages. And it's been successful. Again, the goal here is to remove the fragmity dense invasive growth by hand to expose the native seed bed that's banked in the actual shoreline. And that has actually been allowing some of the native grasses to grow, so we think it's pretty successful, pretty simple.
And you've been doing this by hand?
Doing it all by hand. It's the only way that D E C will allow that activity to take place.
What kind of width are we talking about?
So it's, it's just wherever we see invasives, specifically fragmites. There are other invasives that we see once in a while, like multi-floral rose, but ninety percent of.
But there's a fair amount of fragmity there, aren't there?
There is, and if you go down there today, it's again, it feels good. They will come back in the spring. But the idea is if you cut it three times a year at a prescribed rate, then it actually weakens the root and allows that banked seed to start propagating and growing all by itself, so.
Without reseeding yourself?
Without, we don't even do it. It's amazing. It's really good. We've done a couple of these in Watermill and other places in Georgia Pond. Very successful.
Why, why, why are you trying to get rid of the fragmity?
Well, it's invasive and it competes with the native.
But it means, it's invasive area, it's ubiquitous, right?
Yeah, it's a non-productive. Waterfowl do not like it. There's not, there's not a plant that likes it. So it's two deaths.
Really good for securing the, the shoreline.
Look, give it that on erosion control.
It's good for erosion.
You know, beach rapids.
Short term, short term.
Short term, but it takes over, so, you know, it's too much.
I was disturbed, if you don't mind, in Old Town Pond in Southampton. I drove by there, and I was like, whoa! They leveled it.
Yeah.
And in my, I mean, in my opinion, it seems like that would have helped to hold the water, which will eventually now rise up and go over the shore, unless they're doing.
So they did a different program. We kind of worked with them a little bit on that. That, they actually excavate out the root mass, and that's two to three feet deep.
Mechanically?
Mechanically.
Yeah, that's a real.
They see the clean material. It, it does get repossessed. Yeah, and, you know, we, fragmites are harmful. They still come back.
But what about like tide, you know, ponds rising, ponds rise and sink?
Well, what they do is they, they mat or, you know, put something on the ground to alleviate the soil moving during that pond rise and fall. But that is, you know, it's an aggressive way to do it. It does work. It's just much more costly. The DEC is very tight on that activity.
And are they replacing that with any?
It's all native. Yeah, they replace it with clean sand and native grasses. So those native grasses will start showing this way.
Better than, okay.
You said the DEC is very what?
They, they prefer not to have that level of aggressive, like excavation.
Uh huh.
With the village, they know that they have someone they can go to. With a private homeowner group or property, they prefer to just do hand cutting. And we've, we've done this for a couple of decades. Yeah, it does take years. But it does show us some progress and it, you know, right now it's the only tool we have.
Yeah.
You didn't anything for us, do you? Just to refer?
No, it's just a review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pick those brain and also advise the board at the same time. When we went down to the site and I agree with you, we agree that this frag management is effective. How many times a year are you going out and do you have a settlement?
Schedule? Yeah, so it's, um, going to first and it's, you know, it's June, we'll get eighteen inches. Early June, first spring of the year, eighteen inches to two feet. Before it grows to flower, you might cut it. Because once it grows to flower, then it could generate feed and that's not. So then it'll have a second root by the bottom. We'll cut that, we'll cut that as well before it grows to flower. And then at the end of the season, we won't do a flower in, in, in August, but late August, September, we'll cut it again, just to expose that root bed.
You have, are you allowed to try and hold the root plant once in a while? Uh, we do recognize that, you know, flooding up the
A bowl.
rises and results in, upstand and also kind of affect the soil water.
Yeah, exactly. Not a lot of growth.
Oh, this is less.
If there is, it's a small petal to the plant that's living below the high.
That's less.
Okay. Um, I can mention, it appears as though there was corallates put in place at some point. They're, of course, now all pretty much the same. But there's an expectation that as you're in these fragmities, it's been, it's about they've worked on some of the reviews.
Yeah, and that very destroyed. So we've, we did the corallates as part of our restoration project that we originally did, which was separate from the fragmities on that shoreline. They've worked really well until they were actually back to wave intercation. So they've made a part that really not meant to do much more than help.
I think it's a case.
Um, with the DEC, that's a maintenance permit. With the village, that might be just considered small maintenance. I don't know if they've been on that, but we know probably about let's say forty percent of the corallates that were installed are either disintegrated or broken up. They do work, but they don't last more than a couple of years. And we'll do a fade up as we.
As we just made.
Um, people that I didn't know to.
You're pulling me so last.
That previously before we did that, um, there was some self-help that they did with, it's kind of like, well, the rubble and you remove all that, put it up in the same area. So it is looking much better there and it's much more natural shoreline. So the corallates, people just help there to help kind of get that kicked off.
We, we just, we noticed the erosion and we felt like this the vibes of frag being so effectively vanished or was it something that the agent had on their radar? Secondly, there's a, there is an area between the bank and the manured lawn that appears to be moved.
Right.
Um, we can't find files that shows the, the, um, it's a wildlife public area, but it's different from the manured lawn. You know, there was understanding, so we do see a lot of natives in there that are being cut. Perhaps that could help, you know, to let that grow back.
Yeah.
Capture that runoff that's coming from the lawn over top of the banks or any storms.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for that specifically because it's not in our scope.
Yeah.
But my understanding is for decades, they've done a once a year mow there. And mostly what's there, you know, settlements, initial crack grass and natives, but at least it's got some native component to it as a notion. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so we, we don't need a motion to approve or?
No, this is just him.
Just to head that up.
Thank you for.
Then what the athletes are supposed to be doing and giving you guys a replay.
Updates.
Thank you for the update and the information.
Is that permit ready to expire and look at that, do you know?
Um, I think barring this, right? Because we should talk about that. Yeah, I think, well, I think we did get the approval.
Right.
I think we renewed that. Was that last year then? I think it was last year. Yeah, this is.
Okay.
Just to follow up on the word board. Yeah, we did renew it last year.
For two years?
I think it's a two year, yeah.
Okay.
All right. That could be on for the, where you want.
Yes, all right. That was very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Uh, before we adjourn, I would like to, uh, Lily would like to speak and then I have two question, questions for Elizabeth. And so Lily?
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm the conservation chair of the Garden Club of East Hampton, which is part of the Garden Club of America. We're a hundred and ninety-nine clubs, seventeen thousand members, and we just had our national affairs and legislation workshop and meeting down in Washington DC and had days, two days of speakers. We heard from Dr. Menical from Woods Hole, the chief scientist Catherine Hayhoe from the Nature Conservancy, the Environmental Defense Fund, the Southern Lower contingent, like mind blowing talks. And we were also down there to lobby our congressmen and our senators for a few acts. Number one, we pushed for, which I'm excited, we spoke with Congressman Lolota. And he's going to co-sponsor the coastal, the coastal habitat conservation act. It was introduced by Senator Benjamin Cardin, Lindsey Graham. And it authorizes the coastal program of the US Fish and Wildlife Service, which will provide technical and financial assistance for habitat restoration and protection in priority coastal areas. Which hopefully, we'll see if we're working on getting that over the finish line.
Can that be applied in different regions?
For here, this is a key reason and it's good for Lolota. He's up for reelection and he doesn't have a great. It's nice to see that he's pushing for this. And we also are pushing for the Recovering America's Wildlife Act. Which provides one point four billion annually for ten years to support wildlife conservation strategies in our states, territories, and tribal lands. And it prioritizes innovative recovery efforts for endangered threatened species and funding may be used for conserving and restoring habitats, fighting invasive plant species and diseases, and reintroducing native plants. Then we met with Kristen Gillibrand's policy wonks and his lab is, was a forestry major and had no idea about the what was going on in the Asian longhorn beetle. So I'd send him pictures of that and, you know, thought it was interesting and hopefully these get passed.
So if, if this.
We could find for, this is something where we could get funding for Sag Harbor Village.
Well, that would be worth following up on. Good for you.
So if anyone wants any information, I have our senators and all the info we can write and.
Thank you, Lily.
Cross our fingers.
Graham writing.
It's very interesting.
Oh, good job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, the two items I would like to talk about first are, was the discovery that I made two weeks ago about the construction in front of Beacon Restaurant. And I immediately contacted Brandt and I asked him about the permit and why that the contractor was doing the demolition of the bulkhead without a, a barrier. And for two days, that I, I don't know when the project started. I saw it Thursday and Friday. I think Elizabeth, I contacted you as well, the PCG on that. Uh, and I think, um, I called the building department and they informed me that Ken was in conference with the contractor. That was foul. I have photographs. That, that was all of the retained junk earth behind that bulkhead that had been receiving all of the car stuff for years. Went straight into the bay for a couple of days. I mean, I was there Thursday, Friday. I assumed that they were there a couple of days before then. Uh, and then subsequently, the building inspector, I guess, asked them and on Monday, they put the little swimming pool in. I feel like the wool was pulled over our eyes on this. And I, I just, these, these kind of projects are significant contributors to pollution in the bay. And I don't know if there's any penalty that we, that is.
There's a process under the law with respect to violations. Typically, there's a notice of violation and what will happen is the building inspector will go out and inspect or a code enforcement officer will go out and inspect. And they'll, they find a violation. They alert the property owner that there's a violation. They issue what's called a notice of violation. And you usually have up to thirty days to correct the violation. Um, I believe in this case, they were notified that they needed this extra fencing, what was it called? I don't know what it's called.
Turbidity curtain.
Sorry.
Turbidity curtain.
Right, so they needed that. They were informed that they needed that and then they installed it. So I don't know if it rose to the level of bringing any action in justice court or not. I, I, you know, I'm not a building inspector, but that's what was done.
So this.
That's my understanding. And I also think, that's my understanding of what occurred. But you should follow up with the building department.
I, I will do that.
Not really.
Yeah, I'll do that. When I, when I talk to Brandt.
Discuss in detailed cases and things like that. Usually don't discuss justice court cases or even potential violations or potential justice court cases in an open meeting like this.
Okay, I just, okay, more specifically to our deal here, I asked Brandt if it would be possible if we could institute some procedure where before they are allowed to do shovel one, somebody from whatever committee has to go there and see the turbidity fence in place. Okay, that's.
That would be a condition of approval of this board of the wetland permit, that before a building permit is issued for the project, the applicant has to coordinate with the building department and coordinate and make sure an inspection is done by Nelson Polk and Ford.
Perfect.
Yeah, so how do we?
So that it can get, absolutely, you can make that a condition.
That's great.
So let's codify that, okay?
Well, not codify, but you make it a condition of your wetland permit approval.
Okay.
And then, and also with like your fencing for, you know, well, that.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Meadows still fencing.
Excuse me, the curtain.
This was egregious.
I don't know the term, I apologize.
Yeah, it, it was egregious. It was egregious. It wasn't just like a straw bale was not in place or something. This was right in the door.
But also for the straw bale, you know, fencing as well or barriers that you require.
Right.
You require that those be put up.
There was nothing more impactful that I have seen in a year or two on the coast. Next question, Elizabeth. Can you give us a status of the mooring field resolution?
Oh, they just adopted a resolution to put an outer cap while they take the time, while the village board takes the time. It's in the resolution itself. If you read it, I can, I can distribute a copy to the board. Um, it was adopted at a, at a special meeting and it just puts an outside cap on the number of moorings to sort of freeze everything in place while it gives the time, the village board of trustees time to actually explore all of the issues that were raised at the work session
Okay.
with regards to the moorings. So instead of acting in haste, they wanted to sort of freeze everything for the summer, for the season.
Yeah.
You know, freezing it in place with the number of moorings that were issued last year. Um, and then they're going to explore all of the issues that were raised at the work session on the moorings.
Okay, and.
Over the next year before, hopefully before the next season. And there'll be multiple, there'll be additional offshore public work sessions where it will be discussed and what to do and further information they'll gather, I imagine.
The, the public work session was really effective. I think it, it brought up a lot, actually. Okay.
Right, and they want to explore those issues.
Yeah.
Right, good.
Um, any other?
Can I, can I say something about that?
Briefly?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, I, I made that recommendation at the last village board meeting uh, that they, it was, it was proposed that there were sixty-seven moorings. And, and I made a motion to cap it at sixty-seven and not, in other words, not allow any, any additional ones. The, the question I have, and this is, I guess, for Liz, i- is permits were required for the last three years for any moorings in, in that area. And my question is, was the sixty-seven number that we were given based upon the number of mooring permits that were actually issued last year? Which could be different from the actual number of moorings?
That's my understanding. I'm not sure. You'd have to ask the, the harbor master. I just write the resolution and, you know, that's what they told me. So I don't know exactly, personally, I couldn't even attend the special meeting. Unfortunately, I, I had a conflict, but I, I would recommend that you ask the village board of trustee members that worked on this, along with the harbor master.
Right.
Their, their office should know.
Thank you.
I went to the last meeting and Jim Shields, I guess they had submitted the incorrect.
Yeah, said he had five and he had twenty-two.
Yes, so. I, but they did cap it at sixty-seven.
Yeah, okay, so this is getting fleshed out. Uh, there are issues of insurance and timing and all of that, but that's going to be worked out. All right.
Over the next year, I imagine this will all be discussed and purged.
And we're gonna have like aerial surveillance and identification of the eelgrass meadows. And that should be really helpful. And I think that they need to not be like this fine little filigree line that you barely can see, but it really needs to be pronounced. You know, the eelgrass meadows, from what I understand, they're thinking now, it's like, they just grow by accretion a little bit more, more, more. So it just, you know, you just have to be protective of where they are, plus give them a little growth room and et cetera. I could talk forever on it. I will be quiet.
Liz, one, one other quick question. At, at the, at the, at the previous village board meeting, there was some amendments to the waterways law uh, that were proposed. And I understand those were withdrawn. Have those been?
Those were withdrawn as well, Mr. Parker, or member Parker. They're withdrawn because likewise, for the same reason, the board wants to consider all of the input and all of the information that was submitted at that work session over the next year.
I was unaware of that.
Those local law would be, would be amended to consider all of that as well, depending on what action they want to take, if any.
I was unaware that there was any interest in amending the waterways law. So that's.
No, there was, there was, there was a proposal that, that was at least handed out at, or available at, at the last, to be introduced at the last village board meeting.
That was not acted upon.
Yes.
That was, that was not be acted upon.
That's, it's not going to be acted upon. It's not going to be represented at this, at this, at the upcoming village board meeting.
So it's not considered that that was like public notice and then it could be like in the blink of an eye be approved?
No, because.
No, it was withdrawn. It was.
It was formally withdrawn. The, the village board of trustees is a legislative board, unlike all the other boards, so they have the ability to put things on and off that have done as they deem fit. It's not like they're mandated to act on something just because it's on their agenda.
Well, that wasn't exactly my question. It was like, it was, I, I'm just wondering whether or not.
No, it was, it would have had to set a public hearing and it did not. It was proposed to set a public hearing for this meeting, the next meeting next week, and it did not.
Okay.
Yes. It's taken off.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hi, John.
All right, thank you. See you.
Thank you all. Doris? Need your deadline.
You want it six forty-five?
I know.
Here at like six all eight.
So excited for this very, it's beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.